I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the City Council Public Finance Authority. Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly. Councilmember Kelmick.
Here.
Councilmember Mosher, she's here but out of the room. Mayor Pro Tem Van der Mark.
Here.
Mayor Strickland.
Here.
Councilmember McKeon.
Here.
Councilmember Bolton.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, members. We're going to do a Pledge of Allegiance today. It's going to be led by Councilmember Casey McKeon. Thank you. Please rise if able. Place your hand over your left, over your heart and begin.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're going to do the invocation. Today, it's going to be performed by Huntington Beach Police Chaplain Bob Ewing.
Would you pray with me, please? Gracious and Almighty God, we come into your presence with hearts full of gratitude. We thank you for this great country and for this great city. I thank you for our City Council and all that they do for Huntington Beach. I ask for wisdom and guidance and understanding as they deliberate on the issues before them. I thank you for our city administration and staff, our city attorney, our city manager, and all that work underneath them, continue to guide them as they lead. I pray that all the conversations that go on tonight will be marked by gracious and kind speech. Lastly, Father, I especially ask for protection and safety for our fire, police, and marine safety departments. Watch over Chief Parr and Chief Habberly, give them wisdom and guidance as they lead. Thank you for being with us tonight, in your most holy name, Lord, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Members, go into the agenda. City Attorney, do we have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, we do, Mayor. For City Manager's Report, we received a letter from Ocean View School District for Consent Calendar Item 13, an email communication regarding the Oakview Pilot Program. For Item 18, two email communications regarding system repairs at the Central Library. For Councilmember Items 22, two email communications regarding the Board Commission Committee Organizational Review. For Item Number 23, an email was received regarding fiscal and operations update on the city's middle-income housing program. And for Item Number 24, 72 email communications regarding the invocation policy. We received many more emails on that item after the cutoff time, but everything that we receive on this or any other items tonight will be uploaded into our record, our administrative record.
Thank you. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, we do. Right now, we're at 33, so I'm going to go ahead and call the first 10. Please, if your name is called during this group, just come on down and approach both podiums. Dominic McGee. Andrew Einhorn. Brandy Wertheimer. Dulce Garcia. Diane Bentley. Richard Worley. Kathy Ryder. Stephen Barnes. Amory Hanson. John Etheridge.
And before we speak, I have to make this announcement. At this time, the City Council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment may do so in person by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the City Clerk. All speakers are encouraged, but not required, to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on any topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on any item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the City Council's Administrative Assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire City Council at city.council@surfcity-hb.org. Who wants to start? Thanks for being here. Really appreciate it. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. I'm not used to public speaking, so please bear with me. I'm by no means a model Christian. I'm a pretty new convert in the scale of things, but I want to speak about the assault on the invocation and on prayer in general. I think the last three years have been tough on most of us, if not all of us, but the lies, the rise of insidious ideologies, the assaults on our most vulnerable citizens, our children, have instilled in me the knowledge that our society is in the grip of a dangerous and malevolent zit geest. I now realize that this, taking God out of the public forum, is the end game. I think that it's now not up to these people in governance, but up to individual citizens to keep God in his place. And that's why I'm asking, not the City Council, but people in general here, to keep God here by using your, a fraction of your three minutes, to maybe pray for our country, for our council members, and for our community. And I'd like to start the ball rolling myself. Dear Father, Heavenly Father, Abba, join us right now in these chambers. I ask, dear God, that you fill these chambers with your presence with the Holy Spirit and make it a tabernacle for you. I ask that you touch the hearts of the council, especially those who want to rid these meetings of your presence. And I ask, although we're all flawed, that you give your spirit, your spirit, to these people here, that our city may be looked upon as the ideal, that city on a hill, that cities all around the United States may see our good deeds and praise you in heaven, Father, and follow in Huntington Beach's, in Huntington Beach's path. I ask that right now you fill these chambers with your spirit, and I ask that in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for everything you're doing. This, this city has taken a turn in the last couple of months, and I've seen it. I've actually been emotional over it. I really appreciate what Gracie, Casey, Tony, and Pat have brought to this, and thank you, Michael Gates, also for fighting for us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
My name is Andrew Einhorn, Huntington Beach resident. I've previously operated my own business, which has employed 20 employees for 30 years. I have served on many professional and community boards. I firmly believe that leaders should model and encourage truth-telling. From this podium, I have heard discussions about racist comments made by a council member. I have now viewed some of them that were posted on social media. I feel compelled to add my voice to condemn this despicable act of hatred. So, I requested public records from the City of Huntington Beach of any prior investigations of alleged racist comments made by a council member. Lo and behold, I did not receive anything and no such records of an investigation existed. I have previously proposed an apology for prior racist comments would be accepted. We've all said stupid things in our lives. Since this did not happen in this governmental body or in the media, I therefore urge the council, for the fourth time, for the fourth time, to establish an external ethics committee to investigate previously reported allegations of racist comments made by a council member. We will never forget those that spew racist views. Some of you at this table are props for racism, and you know it. The alarm is very loud, and your willful disregard for the truth will not go away because every racist action has an equal and opposite reaction. We will continue to stand up against this type of darkness against society. Failure to act will leave a permanent stain on your political career, and the painful reality of institutional racism will loom over your heads. Do the correct action, investigate this evil act of targeted hatred. We cannot allow ourselves to be defeated on this issue, nor can we be deterred. Instead, we must roll up our sleeves and push forward until the truth is revealed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, I'm Brandy Wertheimer, and I'm just here to support prayer for the City Council meeting, and that is all I wanted to come up here for.
Thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, my name's Richard Worley. I've lived in Huntington Beach since 1971 and witnessed a lot of things over the years. It's a very conservative town. In '71, we had a guy, a farmer over on Brookhurst that grew asparagus. That's a two-year crop, and that's the way the city was back then. We were very patient, very patient. I'm also, at that time, I wanted to live in this town so bad. We were born and raised in Ventura. My wife and I came down here, picked out a place that looked like Ventura, oil wells, agriculture, and just said, "We're staying here." And I chose to drive 64 miles one way for 20 years to work in an area up in LA so that I could live here. It was that important to us. I'm a father, grandfather, soon-to-be great-grandfather, just not that old. And I'm a former golfer. I was forced to retire in 2014, and now I've been married to my wife for 58 years. Very patient woman. But I'm here basically to say I am not in support of eliminating prayer from this meeting. God has been at the forefront of this country. He needs to be here. Anyway, he needs to be here, and let's keep him here. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor Strickland, Mayor Pro Tem Van der Mark, City Council members and city staff. I'm Huntington Beach resident Stephen Barnes, and I'm commenting tonight on Agenda Item Number 24. Some noted points in this item are an invocation policy, rotation of speakers, potential politicization of the invocation speakers themselves, and then finally, a suggestion that the opening invocation be replaced by a moment of silence. I would suggest that the City Council adopt a policy to include the rotation of our chaplains, Roger Wing, Bob Ewing, and our two new chaplains recently added to our staff. As non-sworn members of HBPD and Fire, they are credible representatives of our city's values and of our Creator God, the God who is referenced on our currency and on the display above the dais. An invocation as a supplication is an appeal to a higher power, whereas a moment of silence is often practiced for solemn events, such as the passing or remembrance of an individual or historic or tragic event. In 1956, "In God We Trust" became our national model. I believe that our petition to God for wisdom and guidance, as is often spoken here by our chaplains, including tonight, provides greater hope for a unified city than the awkward moments of silence that is a grantor to wondering minds. I'm requesting that Item 24 not be supported by the council, and though other attempts will surely be undertaken, no decree by man will ever silence the word of God. Thank you, council.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker, thanks so much for being here.
Greetings. My name is Diane Bentley. I attended the mayor's town hall on May 11th due to the announcement that the mayor would describe the city's plan to develop much-needed additional housing in Huntington Beach. What I heard from the mayor was that the HB Housing Element had been rejected by the City Council majority. What I heard was boasting about a lawsuit intended to prevent the creation of housing in Huntington Beach. What I did not hear was any plan to improve the housing situation in the city. Huntington Beach desperately needs additional affordable housing for our residents. The city desperately needs moderate-income workforce housing so that our teachers, firefighters, and other workers in our city can actually live in the city they work in. Even staff personnel who work for the city cannot afford to live in Huntington Beach. People who work in Huntington Beach have to drive long distances to get to their jobs, increasing greenhouse gas emissions at a time when we need to be reducing emissions. Huntington Beach also needs housing to assist residents who are struggling to make ends meet. This includes elderly residents on fixed incomes who are increasingly being priced out of rental properties, and residents who are already homeless due to the high cost of housing in this city. The lack of a rational plan for increasing housing in Huntington Beach creates a negative trajectory for our city, and certainly creates a negative impression among individuals and businesses who might want to engage with our city. Residents of Huntington Beach have an expectation that our City Council will improve our city by managing the needs of all our residents. That includes developing plans for improving the dire housing situation in our city. Where is the plan? Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Next speaker, thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, and HB voters. Kathy Ryder, longtime voter and resident of Huntington, and I am an ordained elder in my church here in Huntington Beach. In the United States, you must realize that there are at least 200 different ways that Protestants practice Christianity, from the evangelical to the Orthodox Reformed tradition and a whole lot in between. There are about a dozen different ways to practice Judaism. Within the Catholic tradition, there are various practices that are observed. We have the Eastern Orthodox Church. In Huntington Beach, we have Buddhists, Hindus, followers of the different sects of Islam. We have Sikhs, agnostics, atheists, followers of Wiccan, and folks who are spiritual but don't attend any particular church, that they live here in our city. And our council keeps talking about wanting to be inclusive. Well, there is no way with only approximately 24 meetings a year to include everyone's viewpoint or faith. And for those of you who are practicing Christians, in the Bible in Matthew 6, Jesus tells us that when you pray, "Go into your own room, close the door, pray to your Father who is unseen; then your Father, who sees what is done in secret, will reward you." So clearly, public prayer is not a requirement of Christianity. The best way to truly represent everyone is to allow for some moments of reflection so that each person who is attending either in person or at home can prepare their hearts and minds for the meeting in their own way. And by the way, in 2003, moments of silence and reflection were the norm for the Huntington Beach City Council, so this is not new. To be inclusive, every person who practices their version of faith in their own way can do that in a moment of reflection prior to the meeting. And if they feel so inclined, they can come to the podium, just like the gentleman did earlier, and pray during the public comments so that they can pray to their specific faith leader. Religious freedom is not infringed by having a moment of reflection. It is actually the best way to practice religious freedom, for then each person has the freedom to practice their own form of spiritual preparation. There are thousands of cities and municipalities already across the United States that have chosen to give everyone the freedom to practice their faith at their City Council meetings. They have these moments of reflection. It's time that we do the same thing if we truly want to be inclusive and honor all over the face that are represented here in our city. Thank you for listening.
Thanks for being here. Next speaker, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight in support of Item 15, "The Language of the Plaque in Memory of Mr. Michael E. Rogers at the Senior Center in Central Park." I believe that this plaque is an excellent way to restore some degree of Mr. Rogers' legacy to Huntington Beach. In addition, Mr. Rogers' legacy can now be honored at the site now serving the population he advocated for the most, seniors. The plaque also ensures Mr. Rogers' presence is ubiquitous rather than limited to one specific room. Huntington Beach can honor the legacy of Mr. Rogers in additional ways. I encourage those Huntingtonians who wish to memorialize Mr. Rogers to honor him by taking the time out to reach out to the important seniors and their families and lives. I am also hopeful this plaque will be accompanied by a dedication event. Hopefully, more ways to honor Mr. Rogers will become apparent in the future. The time has come for the City Council to restore Mr. Rogers' legacy to Huntington Beach. Once again, I urge a yes vote on Item 15. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Next speaker, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you, council and our entire city. I have a, my name is John Etheridge. I'm the Vice President of the Police and Community Foundation here in town. This week is Police Week. It's a huge time of reflection for officers that have been lost, who have served in the line of duty and have been lost in that line. So I want to thank all the law enforcement officers that are here tonight and for keeping us safe and protecting us. The reason I'm here is I want to invite the entire city, anybody who is interested in supporting law enforcement. We have a poker tournament that's coming up on June 3rd over at the Senior Center. All that money that's raised is going to go to, to one of four areas. We, as the Police and Community Foundation, we do the Citizens Academy. We do, we support all the K-9 activities and K-9 needs for our K-9 police officers here in town. We're also trying to re-facilitate a new K-9 training facility near the helicopter landing area. We also are in, in great support of Nick Vella's family, who we lost a couple of years ago, and Nick was honored yesterday in Washington, DC, at the Police Officers Memorial. So say a prayer for Nick, if you would, and Nick's family. But the charity event is, again, June 3rd. Should be a great time, should be fun for everybody. We'd love for our council to join us. We'd love for our city people to join us, and certainly any of the community to join us. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
All right. Last call for Dulce Garcia. And the next 10, CJ Ray, Doris Hill, Gloria Franklin, Rick Brown, Brenda Glimm, Alan Bayless, Brett Bush, Ken Inoue, Joanne, Abu Gartuny, I hope I said your name right, and Connie Boardman.
All right.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks. One of the things we want to do, my name's CJ Ray, I'm one of the members of the Huntington Beach Surfing Walk of Fame board, and with, for the support that this council gives to our organization and what we do with promoting surfing, which is what defines Huntington Beach and puts it on the spot, we wanted to upgrade your threads a little bit. You guys look great, but this could be a little bit better, so we had some shirts that we gave you guys to show you, just the support that you guys give us and how much we appreciate it. So John Etheridge, our president, has a few words on that.
Thank you, guys. So thanks again. So as the president of the Surfing Walk of Fame, we hold the Surfing Walk of Fame during the US Open of Surfing this year, presented by Pacifica. We want to say thanks to our patron sponsor, Jaxx. We also want to say a huge thank you to one of our partners and a humongous spreader of aloha in the world, Renspooner. We have our, our partner over here, Richard Bybee, my buddy, and we want to present you guys, if you would, allow us with your shirts for this year.
Thank you.
Join us in front?
Sure. Next speaker, you're up. Thank you so much. Try to follow that.
My name is Gloria Denise Franklin, and I've lived here in Huntington Beach for 31 years. I am in favor of opening the City Council meeting with an invocation. I think God needs to be in this room. We need wisdom and guidance. And I oppose the City Council invocation of the public update, which is really a moment in silence. God needs to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker, thanks so much for being here.
Hi, my name is Doris Hill, and I have lived in Huntington Beach for 45 years. In the schools, our students are thankfully still saying the Pledge of Allegiance at the start of each day. In the pledge, we say "One nation under God," and I would appreciate for our council meeting to continue with the chaplain saying the invocation at the beginning of each council meeting. Please oppose Agenda Number 24. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Next speaker, thank you so much for being here.
Hi, my name's Brett Bush. I've been a property owner in Huntington Beach since 1994. Talking in regards to Item Number 24, you know, just, just to speak on a past speaker, you know, there's three different types of prayer, and one of them we're probably not going to do tonight is worship, right? But there's petition, right? And then there's just where you're praying for yourself. Yeah, go in your closet when you're going to pray for yourself. But what we're doing here as, as a basic acknowledgement of God is that we want him to bless us. We want him to bless our country. We want him to keep us safe. Whether we do or not is a moot point to him. He knows who he is. He's asking us to acknowledge him. And if we do that, our beneficent God can really open up his hands and bless us. With that being said, one of the surest ways of refuting claims that America's founding fathers were not Christian is the realization and proclamation of the fact that they believe God birthed America through his providence. They believe God orchestrated the independence of America and the father of our nation. George Washington was among those who affirmed this Christian teaching. Since the 1920s and following, secularists have been attempting to reshape American history to conform to their worldview in an attempt to displace the Christian worldview upon which America was founded. Because the church in America has failed to accurately teach the truth concerning the origins of this nation, these attempts by secular humanists, atheists, agnostics, and other irreligionists have enjoyed significant political, academic, legal, social reward for their efforts. Following the example of the father of life, secularists have deceived Americans and have nearly 100 years by denying the Christian commitment of, of the overwhelming majority. I know we're not going to sit here and get 100% of people acknowledging God, but that doesn't refute the fact of who he is. That's all we're doing, right? And I, and the last thing I'd like to say is really a quote by George Washington. "George Washington sanctified, which means to set apart for holy use the people of America, established a covenant through prayer between God and, and America at Federal Hall in New York City." I don't, I don't think that's a clause, guys. I just don't think that's a clause. I just don't think that's a clause. And I hope... I'm really thankful for Councilmember Moser bringing this to the forefront, because we are at a crossroads.
10 seconds.
We are at a crossroads. We need to choose wisely. Again, God wants to bless us, and He doesn't need us to acknowledge Him. He knows who He is. We need to know who He is.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Kenny Noway. I'm a Huntington Beach resident for 50 years, and I want to discuss three points tonight. As a resident of Huntington Beach who has standing in this matter, I would respectfully request a copy of the settlement agreement between the City of Huntington Beach and the organizers of the Pacific Air Show, wherein the city agreed to pay Pacific Air Show almost $7 million for canceling the air show due to the offshore oil spill. Although the air show has been a successful tourist attraction for Huntington Beach, it does not seem reasonable that the City of Huntington Beach should be liable for the losses of the promoter since the cancellation was caused by the oil spill, which would have endangered the lives of the participants and of the people observing the air show. In fact, canceling the air show may have saved both the promoter and the city potentially millions of dollars for damages should the air show continued under those adverse, treacherous circumstances. Secondly, for those of you people who were told fighting the state housing mandate would not cost the city a dime, please know that the District Court, the appeals court of Orange, California, recently required the City of Huntington Beach to pay $3.5 million to a state housing group because we decided to fight the state housing mandate. $3.5 million is a lot more than none. For the record, please note that I prefer that the City of Huntington Beach resume its prior policy of having the Interfaith Council choose that the clergy who would give the invocation as a way of celebrating the religious groups that worship in Huntington Beach. In interim, as a Christian, I would like to thank the Huntington Beach Police and Fire Captain Roger Wing for his insightful messages, where he has continually requested that the members of the Huntington Beach City Council work together with dignity and respect as they address the many challenges that face you all, so you work on behalf of us residents. In closing, I believe that a world-class city like Huntington Beach deserves a world-class City Council. Isn't that right, guys? And I believe we deserve a real City Council that works together with respect and dignity as you try to address the problems that face us today and will face us during the coming years. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Next speaker, thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Joanne Abu Gartouni. I'm speaking as a proud daughter of World War II veteran, Japanese-American Nisei. From F Company, "Go for broke" was our motto. He reminded me how important prayer over government was, prayer on the battlefield, the chaplains out there, when he was doing what he needed to do. And I believe that it's very important as a Christian that we do not get rid of invocations. And so I want to just make sure that you hear my voice. I am a resident of Huntington Beach. And I agree with Ben Franklin, who said that the first order of business in our government should be prayer, and that we need this. So please make sure that stays here. This is also, this place for many people is sacred. Why? Because our founding fathers, they believed in God. And if we take all this away in this time that we have since 2020, it's pretty awful out there. A lot of ugly stuff is happening. The last thing we need to lose in this country is God. So please keep invocations. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Next speaker, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. My name's Alan Bayless. I've been living in Huntington Beach for most of the year since 1964. I'm a practicing attorney, and I am the president of a Huntington Beach-based naturist social club, Naturists in the OC. I'm here speaking in opposition to proposed ordinance 4282. I have to question, how does this proposed amendment benefit the citizens of Huntington Beach? I don't believe there's anything in this, there's really no staff report to speak of. It effectively bans naturist use of facilities for private events, emphasis on the word "private events," like my organization did from 2008 until 2014, until we had a change in the city attorney's office. The city needs to give an opportunity for us, those who are affected by these changes, an opportunity to work with city staff, the director of community services and whatnot, to come up with a solution to this issue. First of all, I don't think there's an issue that even needs to be addressed by this proposed amendment. I'll add another thing. Back in 2007, nobody in this room that I'm aware of was here in 2007 when the original public nudity ordinance was proposed. And at that time, my organization and others opposed the adoption of the ordinance, but it was adopted. However, they did make a change before adopting the ordinance. They removed the term "natal cleft." And the reason is, is that that language in the ordinance would prohibit thong bikinis on the beach or a simple clowning act of moaning or something like that. So at that time, it was considered and removed for that reason, okay? Additionally, adopting this ordinance would have some other unintended consequences, okay? It would ban nudity in locker rooms, showers, and toilet stalls in the city facilities. I don't think that that's necessary or proper, and I think would result in some unintended consequences. I understand that there's some concern on the part of some city staff about, you know, city employees that work events like the ones we used to have.
10 seconds.
All right. They can sign a waiver. That's what waivers are for. No legal problem whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next speaker, thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Strickland. My name's Connie Boardman. I'd first like to point out, by settling the Code Four lawsuit, the council majority did not save the air show. Code Four didn't bring the air show to Huntington Beach, and there are other companies that do a great job of running air shows around the nation. However, you may have saved Code Four by giving that company quite an influx of cash. I remain amazed that the council majority approved a settlement that gives the company founded by Kevin Elliott $5 million of taxpayer money, $2 million of any money the city gets in a future settlement over the oil spill. Based on the summary released by the attorney's office, it looks like the city will eventually be giving Mr. Elliott's company between $7 to $8 million. Councilmember Kelmac has repeatedly asked the city attorney for a copy of the actual settlement, but has been denied that. Mr. Gates has told him that the settlement can still be finessed, and that it's a multi-step process. What? Do you have a final agreement or not? If you don't, why did you have a press conference at the pier to announce the settlement? The city attorney has an obligation to provide a copy of the settlement to a council member. Our Charter, Section 304B states, quote, "The City Council shall have control of all legal business and proceedings and all property of the legal department," end quote. That makes it clear that Councilmember Kelmac has a right to review the entitled settlement document, and yet Mr. Kelmac has not been provided a copy. Why not, Mr. Gates? What's in it that you don't want him to see? What's he going to have to do to get a copy? Sue the city attorney? Councilmember McKeon has consistently expressed concern about the spending of taxpayer money. For example, at the December 20th meeting, staff requested about $138,000 to return to a pre-COVID organizational structure, and Mr. McKeon made the motion to approve it with the caveat that staff make cuts or find cost savings to offset that amount. When the city needed about $35,000 more to complete installation of public art in Central Park, he raised concerns. And when the director of homeless services resigned to take a position elsewhere, the councilmen supported changing the position from that of a director to a manager to save about $50,000 to $75,000 a year. So Mr. McKeon is obviously concerned about the expenditure of public funds, but he supported the settlement of millions of dollars. You know, it hasn't gone unnoticed, Mr. McKeon, that when you were sworn in, Mr. Elliott, the president and CEO of Code Four, was with you down here as you were taking the oath of office. I know from taking the oath myself that it's common to invite family and close friends to stand with you as you take the oath. So that leads me to think that Mr. Elliott is a close friend of yours. And I'm surprised that you voted to support a settlement that awards a friend's company millions of taxpayer dollars. Councilmember McKeon, I'm surprised that no one warned you that this would be seen as a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Council Moser, for having the common sense and putting forth a moment of silence instead of an invocation, which so far is only Christian in nature. Until this council has thought about it and realizes that there are many different religions here, I myself will begin to start doing invocations at your meetings to represent other religions. I'm Buddhist. I don't believe in a God, but I respect your right to have those prayers. I respect your religions. I respect how you treat your people. I respect all aspects of it. You have shown zero respect for the religions of all the other people that may be in this room. The Hindu, the Buddhist, the Muslim, on and on and on. You treat us like we're nothing. We are the same. We are humans here with our own religions. My invocation, your pain is our pain. Touching you gently, we pray that we may become peace bringers and life bringers so that our home, in its journey around the sun, not become a sterile and lonely place. Save our earth, for God's sake, instead of worrying about Christian religion. We're all in religion.
Thank you so much for being here. Next speaker, thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor Strickland, Mayor Pro Tem Van Damarc, and City Council members. I think it's important to look at the invocation from a historical perspective, and that's why it's essential to initiate the proceedings with a prayer. Before I dive into historical precedence of the Christian foundation of our great country, let me first address the word "strategy." I think the best definition of strategy is the military definition, which is positioning one's forces in the most advantageous position prior to engagement. And I think from a city's perspective, it's how do we position city council members in the most advantageous position prior to addressing the business of the city affairs, and that is to simply pray for divine intervention from our almighty God. This prayer to God is simply asking for discernment and guidance. The prayer is not for a specific outcome, one way or another. Now for historical precedence. The first colonists came to North America to gain religious freedom to avoid persecution. Thus, at the very beginning, the colonists wanted to ensure that the government would not interfere with our rights to practice religion. In 1775, the American colonists rose up against British tyranny, initiating the Revolutionary War of Independence. The first four battles were fought by colonists whose pastors implored them in of their congregations to rise up against the British. In June 11, 1776, the Second Continental Congress entrusted a committee of five delegates with composing the Declaration of Independence. Thomas Jefferson called that draft "an expression of the American mind." Thus, every right in the Declaration of Independence was a tapestry of the sermons coming from the pulpits of the colonists' churches. July 4, 1776, the Declaration of Independence was signed by 56 colonists, 54 of which were devout Christians, 29 of which had seminary degrees. Following Revolutionary War in 1781, the founding fathers began drafting the U.S. Constitution and ratified it in 1789. They promptly began creating what is known as our Bill of Rights, ratified in 1791. John Adams said, "Inalienable rights are from God, and rights which cannot be repealed by human laws." The first purpose of government is protect inalienable rights. The very first amendment in the Bill of Rights was protect freedom of speech, religion, press, assembly, and petition. The right of freedom of religion was specifically addressing the issue of preventing government from dictating what religion or denomination we should be practicing. It was not intended for the government to eliminate core Christian foundations of American or scrubbed from our governmental procedures or policies. From our humble beginnings, U.S. Congress opened prayer with the almighty God. The year following Revolutionary War in 1782, U.S. Congress printed 20,000 English Bibles for American schools, and throughout our great American history, American leaders have always called in divine intervention with prayer, and we should never lose sight of that, of our unique Christian values. Our seventh president of the United States, Andrew Jackson, said,
10 seconds.
"The Bible is the rock of our republic rest." John Adams said, "The general principles of our fathers achieved independence were general principles of Christianity." And Abraham Lincoln said, "The Bible is the best gift God has ever given man." And the United States Constitution is now the longest-standing constitution in the world, and it's a testament to the pillars of Christianity.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're out of time. Thank you.
Let's maintain the innovation.
I appreciate you being here. We've got time. Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Madam Clerk, more speakers?
This is the last remaining, this is the last remaining group. There's about 13. Jean Gooden, Pat Goodman, George Washington, Pano Rousiakas, Sherri Atkinson, Carrie Anderson, Carrie Swan, Bethany Webb, Randall Costello, Roger Noor, Kimberly Austin, Kane Durham, Frank Marchesi. Since no one's stepping up.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor Strickland and Council. Carrie Swan here. I'm here to oppose Agenda Item 24, but I do also want to make quick reference that I do acknowledge support for Burns, Agenda Item 22, and McKeon, Agenda Item 23. I've also gone on record opposing Agenda Item 24, but I wish to emphasize something very important for what's being proposed here by Councilmember Moser. A moment of silence is not, I repeat, not, a moral equivalent to an invocation. To even suggest such a thing is either intended to insult the purpose of an invocation or pure ignorance. An invocation is, in fact, a petition to God for divine assistance and guidance. It is used across all religions, not just Christianity, but it acknowledges a higher power or presence for guidance and gratitude. Congress and most state legislatures open their sessions with an invocation, along with many county legislatures, according to a survey by the National Association of Counties. The Supreme Court in Greece v. Galloway in 2014 upheld the prayer prior to town meetings. Does not violate the Constitution. But again, to suggest a moment of silence is somehow something typically, which is something typically reserved to acknowledge a death of a beloved community member, is somehow equal to invocation. Really? I think it's time to call this agenda item for what it really represents. Since Ms. Moser was quite happy to have her political allies deliver invocations, and since she was caught in a lie on the dais and managed to permanently expose her beloved interfaith council, which she proudly proclaims gave her her start in HB politics, apparently she now wishes to silence all invocations. So here's an idea. If a moment of silence is how you deem to acknowledge something really important, then perhaps you, Ms. Moser, can adopt a personal moment of silence in lieu of filibustering and lecturing the community on what you deem appropriate and important. Sound ridiculous? Yeah, it is ridiculous, just like an agenda item to replace a deeply reverent invocation with a moment of silence. Thank you for your time, and may God continue to bless and guide our community and its leaders.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Strickland and Council members. My name's Pat Goodman. I attended the mayor's housing town hall last Thursday evening to learn about the city's housing plan as stated in the flyer to advertise this event. Sadly, there was no presentation of any housing plan whatsoever. There are a couple of things I think that the city might want to address pretty pronto. It's regarding our navigation center and the HBO's Oasis Transitional Shelters. That they're both at capacity, and the Oasis... That they're both at capacity, and the Oasis Shelter has a 300-person waiting list. These transitional shelters are meant to be way stations on the path to permanent housing, not places where people live for months on end. A suggested action to remedy this situation is for the city to work with landlords to accept third-party payments for rent. You know, maybe one unit, that kind of thing. Without permanent housing for people at these shelters to move to, there's no way to enforce our anti-camping laws. Another action would be to convert another motel into permanent housing. So those are two things that I think that we could try to implement pretty quickly. The other thing I wanted to bring up as a taxpayer and longtime resident and homeowner of Huntington Beach is that I too attended the press conference held on last Tuesday to announce the date of the next airshow, and that Pacific Airshow LLC would be the sole marketing promoter company for this event. And it was touted as a campaign promise kept. It's very, very difficult for me to understand that one of your campaign promises, I mean, if you did this, I'd really kind of check myself out, but that you promised to pay a private company $7 million so that they could continue this airshow. There are, as pointed out, other vendors that would be real happy to take on this project, I'm sure. Right now, it's just a permitting process. There's no contract with the airshow promoter. I don't, I just cannot understand it. And to me, it's a straightforward gift of public funds to a private company. This doesn't make any sense to me. And I would really appreciate some kind of comments from the city council regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks so much for being here.
Hi, my name is Sherri Atkinson, and I'm a longtime resident of Huntington Beach. My daughter has a dog called Arthur. He's a labradoodle, no, an air doodle. And whenever I walk Arthur, everybody says, "That is a one-dimensional dog." Is it because he's exuberant? But that's what I hear. I think the city council is one-dimensional on the need of housing. We must fight the state at every cost. I am speaking on the need for affordable housing at all levels. We have been asked to address the housing shortage and to comply with a housing element. Yes, the numbers are high. We've been asked to come up with housing units for low-income, low, moderate, and above moderate. Separate from the numbers is the call to help the state in addressing the housing need. So far, we have 139 units approved for 2023. Only 13 of them are moderate housing. By being one-dimensional, we miss the opportunity to provide affordable housing to single parents, the disabled, seniors, those coming out of the navigation center, the new professionals, and 82% of the people that work here who can't live here. I work as a therapist, a clinical social worker. I work with a dad with a disabled child. When he drives to work, he has to sleep in his car at lunch hour because the hour drive has exhausted him. When he gets home before he takes care of his child, he has to just decompress for 30 minutes. By being one-dimensional, we miss those opportunities to help others. By being one-dimensional, we are not being part of the solution. Of 539 jurisdictions, 397 have already come up with a housing element, 142 have not, and every day they are complying. I ask that we do the right thing, the compassionate thing, in addressing the housing needs, and that we no longer be one-dimensional like Arthur, my daughter's air doodle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Jeannie Gooden, and we have lived here in Huntington Beach for over 25 years. My comments this evening are on the convocation. However, before I do that, I must comment on the vicious attacks on the part of Mayor Pro Tem Gracie Van der Mark. Your attacks are vicious and fallacious, so I'm just telling you, stand strong. You, I support you, and I know many other people do as well. You will prevail. Now, I'm here to speak in favor of the city council invocations, and I'm opposed to the city council invocation public update. The First Continental Congress can trace opening prayers to 1775. Invocations have been a tradition by our national leaders and should be continued here in Huntington Beach. Our U.S. Constitution does not have a phrase "separation of church and state." It is a phrase that some people draw incorrect assumptions and conclusions. The First Amendment of our U.S. Constitution reads, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." So I'm humbly requesting that the invocation public update be denied, and that you continue with your regular invocations honoring God to begin our city business. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker, thank you so much for being here.
Absolutely. All right. Good evening, esteemed council and respected members of our community. Tonight, my name is Pana Fruziakis. I am on the Public Works Commission and a 2024 candidate hopeful. I hope to one day aspire to represent you on this council. But I want to say that I'm here tonight because I, like many of our other speakers tonight, are really troubled by this new item that's come out, this Agenda Item Number 24, that is seeking to fundamentally remove our invocation from our meeting. It is a time-old tradition of our city council, and it's to replace it with a moment of silence. Well, there's a couple of things I want to go over here. First of all, the tradition that we've had in our community of having our invocation, that's really emblematic of the unity that our community has. When it comes to all the different faith backgrounds, when it comes to all the different speakers and different religious figures that have come before here, it's not just been Christians, it's been many different faith backgrounds. And so for us to have an item on the agenda that's being proposed by a member of this council that very soon, most likely, is going to be trying to seek your votes for the next election, it undermines the very unity that it represents in our community, which is for us to respect each other's faiths and convictions. It's not possible to be able to just say, "Hey, we're just going to have you pray in your room, and that's all you need." I mean, that's a really dangerous form of logic right there, because you could say, "Oh, you can have all the constitutional rights you want in your bedroom." Well, thank you so much for giving me the permission to have rights in my bedroom. I really do appreciate that. But we need to be able to have the rights to be able to express ourselves in our faiths in a public forum. And the moment of silence just isn't going to do that, and that's why when it was tried before, it really didn't last very long. It got removed because it didn't work out for the community, and so I don't want us to try that same mistake again. And so really, the question that I have to pose to Councilmember Moser regarding this item is, is it really about inclusivity, your item? You know, it seems to me to be a guise of neutrality that's really covering a form of discrimination, which is the discrimination against our people of faith. Because many residents in our community have told me, especially of the Christian faith, but all faith backgrounds, have said, "We're concerned that our rights are being trampled on and that we're not being heard based on this agenda item." So given that information, I just want to say that we, as a community, should be upholding the traditions that unite us. And so remember, with progress, progress is not about discarding our values. Progress is about upholding the values that allow us to best serve our community. And so with that being said, I'm going to end on that.
10 seconds.
Thank you very much. God bless Huntington Beach. May you look over us and have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, Bethany Webb, 40-year Huntington Beach resident. First, I'd like to start off by mentioning that the first week in June is Gun Violence Awareness Week, and so Moms Demand Action is asking cities to either light through City Hall or maybe the pier in orange in honor of people's lives, their lives, to gun violence, including my sister in the biggest mass shooting in Orange County history that was committed by a Huntington Beach resident. Then I'd like to thank Natalie Moser for Number 24, because I know that you were really trying to be inclusive. And I'd like to say to the people that are talking about our forefathers in 1776 and what they wanted, they also wanted women to have no rights and black people to be three-quarters of a person and slaves. So if we're going to go back to 1776, maybe we should look at the flaws that were done by our forefathers, like owning people, okay? And we should, I'm also an agnostic. I have my own spiritual beliefs. I don't believe that any of your books can tell me what God has in her mind, so I would just ask that maybe people take what Natalie said and look at it as somebody who is trying to draw peace. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening, Kimberly Austin. I've been a resident of Huntington Beach for 31 years. I've owned businesses for 26 years in Huntington Beach, so I am opposing Item Number 24. And if it's okay, I just want to read something from the National Day of Prayer, because it kind of says it all. So for many, praying is an instinctive, soul-deep reaction to times of great joy, deep distress, and crushing grief. Prayer can also guide and focus us in our daily lives as we seek direction, comfort, and blessing for the challenges that lay before us. Indeed, for many, prayer permeates all aspects of life. In the midst of ongoing debate over the proper intersection of church and state, our own government leaders invoke the Almighty before launching a day's legislative work, inaugurating a governor or president, or speaking to families reeling from natural disasters and brutal terrorist attacks. America's founding fathers recognized how crucial religious liberty is to our culture and wove religious protections into our laws and government. They also took time to pray together publicly, as they said about writing our Constitution. Our legacy of prayer is in, we're in jeopardy of things that are at stake. One is the continuation of public prayer, tradition that began with our founding fathers, and the freedom of community to pray according to our faiths in a public setting without censorship, and the preservation of freedom of speech in the face of someone being offended by a person's demands, in face of one offended person's demands for censorship. The foundational American principle of freedom of religion is at stake. I am opposing Item Number 24. I hope you continue with the invocation of prayer before the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Next speaker, thank you so much for being here.
Good evening. My name is Kane Durham. Thank you, council members, for allowing me the space to speak. First, I want to speak in support of the further consideration of the invocation policy update. There's a large variety of faiths practiced in Huntington Beach, and as someone who believes in the emotional power of prayer, I think it's important that we are reflecting all of those diverse faiths in our invocation. I'd like to hear more from Councilperson Moser about her thoughts regarding this agenda item, but I can say for myself, I can see the value in a moment of silence dedicated to the attendees to make their own prayers or time of reflection. As a born and raised Christian, I know I can speak, at least for myself, that I learned that God is everywhere, regardless of whether we pray loudly and publicly to them or not. If not a moment of silence, I can see the value in ensuring that we are granting space for invocations from all of the many faiths practiced in this city. I also would like to echo the requests made by others here for full transparency on the settlement made recently regarding the airshow. This has been a major point of concern amongst many of us here in the community. Speaking on another, and hopefully more fun, issue, I'd like to invite everyone here to our first annual Huntington Beach Pride Celebration this Sunday at the pier from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. You may have seen over the last few months the small handful of us that gather on the pier on Sundays to share joy, pride, and diversity. This upcoming Sunday, Harvey Milk Day, will be uniting in dignity and pride and joy and flying the largest pride flag ever flown in Orange County. You may wonder why we're out there. As we've been out on the pier over the last few months, we've been thanked over and over and over again by our fellow HB community members for being there. It's no secret that HB has a reputation in SoCal and across the nation. We're really happy to be a visible reminder that queer people exist and are welcomed in this city. I know I can speak for my fellows, that it's been incredibly touching to have countless HB community members tell us that they're grateful for that reminder, whether it impacts them, their loved ones, or their neighbors. It's for this reason that we are excited for our neighbors here in Huntington Beach and across SoCal to join us at the pier on May 21st, this Sunday, at 11:00 a.m., and to show the world the enthusiastically welcoming place this city can be to all who are part of our greater community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hello, Huntington Beach City Council. My name's Randall James Costello. I've spoke here before. You built a giant, beautiful thing out for everyone to surf and have a great time and then tore it down. I don't get it. But I have one question for each one of you, and can you do that? Can I ask a question and you answer?
No.
Well, that's a shame, because I will find out, all right? I will tell you right now, as I'm staring every one of you in the eye. See this right here? If you're not going to answer, then I will be free to talk for two more minutes. Man, thank you, Jesus Christ, our Savior. Man, please calm me. Oh, Lord, that's why I carry this. It keeps me calm. It keeps me calm. It keeps me so calm. My question to you, Huntington Beach City Council, police chief, the mayor, I'm going to say the mayor, because I will definitely find out, the policemen of Huntington Beach, whoever these people are, I don't know, maybe that's the police chief, I don't know. I don't know how this works. I'm trying to be calm, and it's a celebration that is going to blow your head off. I have on, okay, now we can talk. How much time I got?
You've got a minute and 12 seconds.
Hallelujah. Did you know we're pronouncing Hollywood wrong all this time, and it's pronounced "hallelujah"? Did you know that? Did you know we're building mansions here? You, mayor, we're going to build you a mansion. Do you hear me, sir? And I'm talking about God's children. Oh, my God, help me, Lord. Lord, have, oh, my God, how do you wake up? Oh, Lord, yes. How do you wake up the Holy Ghost? Oh, thank you for telling the truth. That's what we're finding out right now. That's why this is so.
10 seconds. You have eight seconds.
No, I'm done.
Thank you for being here.
I'm done, and I will find out.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker, thanks. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Okay. Good evenings, council and all in attendance. I came here tonight to speak in support of the invocation. It's been a longstanding tradition in this city. I've been in this city for almost 40 years. I've been in this city for almost 40 years. I'm 61 years old. And it's, you guys have something that's been working. I wouldn't change something that's working. You know, everything these days, they're trying to change things. It's just like, you know, it was working for the people here before you guys were here, before the people before you were here. Just leave it alone. The city's a beautiful city, you know, just leave, it's, everything is fine. Just go on with what you're doing. Quit trying to change everything, because people are leaving this state, because people are just getting fed up with people goofing up everything, and they're getting out of here. You know what I mean? It's just like, leave it alone, you know? Let's get back to just everybody get along. But anyways, I'm, I'm for the invocation. And by the way, here's an American dollar bill. And what does it say on this dollar bill? When you turn it around, it says, "In God we trust." Okay? So when this, this bill and the country was founded, it was founded with God on the paper of the bill, because they believed that God had to have his hand in this situation. So stick with this, with God, and pray to him. All, God is for everybody, no matter your religion. There's one God. You can call him all different names, but he's one person. And you need to call on him in one per God, and, and that's what we need to do. Not argue about which God, just one God. It's one God. It's right here. God, G-O-D. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, people, folks. I have been telling you my problems, my challenges with Huntington Beach Police Department. And since the chief of police isn't here, I don't think it's fair for me to call him a weasel or anything else until he is here. So I'm going to be polite, and I'm not going to say all the things that I've been, they, now they're charging, first, they towed my car $950, illegally towed it, because they told me it was, the registration was expired for over six months, which it was not. I showed it to them, and then they kicked me out of the police station. So then I had to pay the $950. And for, for four hours worth of towing, it cost me $950 plus $170 for the tow, which we got, that taken care of. I mean, and thank you very much, Mayor, for your, for your part, because you were the rational voice in the room that would, when I was, I was talking to you and Chief Parra. Then, but now, they're charging me with two counts, the DA won't take it, but the city, the city attorney will, and they're charging me with two counts of, two misdemeanor charges. And one of them is, it's just interfering with them trying to steal my car, and they arrested me, and they released me right then at the same time. But I, but they arrested me, and now they're charging me for, for a whole, I can go up to jail for a year for telling them not to tow my car. It was not, it was not past six months, the registration was not six months. This is crazy, okay? I went to an attorney, they told me I had to pay $9,000 for the attorney to get this thing off. This is just getting ridiculous and more ridiculous and more ridiculous. Michael, I would like to see you, I would like to see the city attorney and discuss this. And I hope that I could do that, which I'll be calling you tomorrow, and I'll, and I'll, I'll report back to the city council exactly what, what the outcome was, because I really, really don't need this anymore. My whole family has been really upset at me, telling me to forget this matter. But man, now it's going to cost me $9,000 more? No way. No way in hell. Okay? So I can't wait for Chief Parra to show up here, because he's supposed to be here every so, every other week or whatever, and he's not, and I really miss him. I really do. So, and also about anybody, about anti, anti-racial remarks and them doing, I mean, you guys doing a, I, I'm sorry, yeah, you guys doing a, a, oh, no, I'm sorry, a, a, to see if anybody actually was, I mean, anti-racial. I really think that everybody should say whatever they want, so that way you know exactly where they stand.
10 seconds.
Exactly where they stand. If everybody keeps quiet and doesn't say what their prejudices or anything else, nobody knows who's prejudiced and who's not. That's not right. You want to know who's prejudiced. Thank you.
Time, thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
All right. Your God is the father of lies. Lies are powerful whenever they are accepted as truth. They have the power to hinder us from doing God's will. After our alter, our perception of God, others, and who we are in Christ, they have the power to influence our behaviors and keep us locked into patterns of sin, negative thoughts, and unmanageable feelings. John 8:44 says, "You are, you are of your Father, the devil, and your will is to do your Father's desires." He, he was a murderer from the beginning and has nothing to do with the truth, because there is no truth in him. When he lies, he speaks out of his own character, for he is a liar and the father of lies. The doom of liars is spoken of in Revelations 21:8. The liar will forever be separated from loving and holy God. The liar, the liar will have all eternity to regret the deception they refuse to renounce as they hear their lies echo in their memory. God hates the act of lying, because it goes contrary to his truth. Romans 16, Paul gives warnings against those who create dissemination and hindrance within the faith community. He describes such deceivers as ones who use smooth talk and flattery in order to distort truth and manipulate others. Regardless of how righteous, justified, and even sincere as these deceptive people may appear, Paul calls them out for what they are, focused only on their own selfish and self-serving desires. Although the term did not exist in the days of Scripture, Paul was referring to manipulative practices known today as gaslighting. The manipulation of information is a powerful gaslighting trick because of the power of believability over the power of genuine truth. A gaslighter deals in the commodity of presenting the information as credible, believable, and irrefutable, especially when it is an outright fabrication. They use them, their natural position or assumed authority to vomit their disinformation under the guise of credibility, and often prescribe the threat of negative consequences if the validity of the information is challenged. Thus, those being gaslit dare not question the legitimacy of the liar. And instead of those, their own grasp of reality amid the smokescreen of fabrication.
10 seconds.
You're a pathological liar. Seek medical help. Stop telling lies. Stop with the identity politics. Stop with your woke religion. Stop with your divisive speak. It is ripping our great nation apart. You are the father of lies. Repent, Skywalker, over and out.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Wait, members, it concludes public comments. So we're going to move on forward with the agenda. Next up, council committee appointments, announcements. Does any councilman or councilwoman have anything to announce? Seeing none, moving on. A, B, 1, 2, 3, 4 reporting. Does anyone have anything to report?
That's the word in a shirt.
Seeing none?
I, I do, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, councilman.
The, last week, I attended the SCAG conference, the General Assembly, the Southern California Association of Governments, and out in the desert. It was a great conference, met a lot of great representatives from other cities, and attended several of the symposiums, including one on mobility, and it was just overall a great, a great way to meet and learn different things from different cities that are usually trying to accomplish really great public policy. Thank you.
Great. Anything else? Oh, Councilman Burns.
I attended the same conference.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Members, moving on. Openness and negotiation disclosure, disclosures. Does any member have anything to disclose? Seeing none, moving on. City manager's report. City manager, please introduce your report.
Mayor Strickland, members of the council, we have Sergeant Mike Thomas from the Huntington Beach Police Department, who will be presenting the e-bike safety message. Sergeant Thomas.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor and council. Sergeant Mike Thomas with Huntington Beach PD. Thank you for this opportunity. Just going to address the police department's dealings with e-bikes as it relates to e-bike So just an overview in this presentation, going to be going over the recent statistics beginning in January of last year, because that's when we began differentiating between e-bikes and standard bicycles. Also, I'm going to talk about the police department's three-pronged approach in dealing with e-bike safety, which includes enforcement, education, and our collaboration with traffic So this graph reflects all e-bike collisions that we've had since January of last year. It's, each bar is separated by age group. As you can see, the under 18 age group is the most affected. They have been in the most amount of collisions since January of last year. And though we are concerned with all the age groups represented, our resources for enforcement and education are predominantly focused on school-aged kids that just don't really understand the rules of the road and don't really have much driver experience. So these are the top three primary collision factors, or in other words, the reason why a collision occurred. The top primary collision factor that we have seen is riding against traffic or on the wrong side of the road, followed by unsafe turning and unsafe speed. And this is just an overview of all the collisions that we've had in the city since January of last year. Obviously, non-e-bike collisions are the most that we have seen, which was represented by the bar on the left. And though it represents a smaller proportion, as a police department, we recognize that e-bikes are becoming more prevalent within the city. We feel that we're in a good position now with the strategy and a plan to address the growing e-bike issue within the city, and our long-term goal is to ultimately drive these numbers down. So just an overview of the statistics, those are our top three collision factors. I just wanted to point out, of all the bike-related collisions that we've had in the city since January of last year, 52% or just over half of them involved in e-bike. And of those e-bike collisions, 46% of them involved a child under the age of 18. So as I mentioned, we have a plan at the police department. It's a three-pronged plan. Enforcement and education is the bread and butter of the police department. Those two go hand in hand, and there's a lot of overlap between the two. Also, we've been collaborating with traffic engineering regarding things that have to do with sign placement, for example. A little bit later on, I'm going to talk about the new radar signs that were put down on the Beach Service Road, those types of things. So enforcement, we've done a lot of directed enforcement as it relates to e-bikes. Some of the things that I just wanted to point out here is, last summer, we had a lot of complaints from citizens regarding e-bikes and other bicycles on the Beach Service Road that were going over the Huntington Beach Municipal Code 10 miles per hour maximum speed limit. So all throughout the summer, we had officers down there with radar detectors and actually citing people for going above the 10 miles per hour. A lot of the people that we ultimately ended up talking with had absolutely no idea how fast they were traveling. So we feel that with the radar signs that are put down there, and also our continued enforcement over the summertime, we feel that hopefully we can curtail the situation of speeders of bicycles on the e-bike, or on the bike path. Also, we had received some information regarding a large group of teenagers that were looking to have a gathering at Seacliff Center, e-bikes in particular. So ultimately, we got several officers that same day. We did a bunch of enforcement at the start of the event and curtailed that situation and prevented it from getting out of hand. Also, our motor officers are mirroring the bell schedule for the AM and PM times of the day in order to do enforcement there, traffic enforcement, and of course, e-bike enforcement as well. Another way that citizens are able to lodge a traffic complaint or a specific issue within the city is through MYHB. Since January last year, we've had 389 MYHBs that we have dealt with and responded to. So an overview, since January last year, we've issued 134 citations to e-bikes. Those are our top three categories. Thankfully, we have grant funding, and that allows us the opportunity from the state in order to do more of these bike enforcement operations. Also, the grant funding we use goes towards education courses, which I'll discuss. So the California Office of Traffic Safety, or OTS, provides us funding at the police department in order to do bike safety courses. So each of these bike safety courses, it's not all encompassing, but I just listed a few there. Really, they're geared towards youth, those who are under the age of 18, teaching them about bike safety and the rules of the road at an early age. So those that have e-bikes or may eventually get one, that we can teach them at an early age that they have to basically drive like a vehicle. Also, the bicycle safety course, we hold here at council chambers every other month. That's basically when officers cite someone for a bicycle violation in lieu of a fine, they have to attend the bike safety course where, where we again talk about bike safety and the rules of the road. Something I really want to hit on is recently, we have been working with Marina High School in developing a pilot program. So far, we've done one classroom presentation of about 40 students, but essentially what it is, is we're working with Marina. And going forward, any of the students that want to bike, park their e-bikes on campus will be required to do, sit through the classroom presentation, and ultimately take a test and receive a registration sticker that shows that they successfully completed the course. So it hasn't happened yet, but Marina plans to in the fall, this upcoming school year, to make this class mandatory. I just got word from the district that other high schools within the city are also going to adopt this, this similar program, and hopefully will also wrap the middle schools into that as well. Another way that we've been addressing the education for e-bikes is through social media. So recently, we collaborated with junior lifeguards and produced several short video clips that involved mock traffic stops with various e-bike violations, like not wearing a helmet or riding on the wrong side of the road. And we've shared it on social media under the hashtag TrafficTipTuesday. So, so far, we've received over 10,000 likes, so it's just another way we're getting the word out. Also, we are currently updating the HPPD website to reflect more updated information on bicycles and add an e-bike component. That should be done by this summer. Just a few photographs of some of the events that we're, we've been doing. Bicycle rodeo for the younger, particularly elementary-age kids. Recently did an e-bike safety clinic, partnering with Rad Power Bikes. That upper right-hand corner photo is just a still shot from the Traffic Tip Tuesday video that I mentioned. And finally, we have been collaborating and speaking openly with traffic engineering. I mentioned the radar signs that were recently put down there on the bike path. So with the radar signs and with us out there doing enforcement, we're hoping to curtail the issue and hopefully get less of the bicyclists that are speeding there on the Beach Service Road. Also, in the future, we're going to be looking at adding wrong-way bike signs to the bike lanes to hopefully address that number-one primary collision factor of riding on the wrong side of the road. As you know, we've put several of the enhanced bike lanes throughout the city. We're going to be looking at doing more of those as needed. And finally, we're looking into possible local ordinances, and of course, as a police department, we'll be reaching out to council. We'll be getting your input and your direction on addressing e-bike safety within the city through possibly some local ordinances. So that completes my presentation. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you, Sergeant. Any questions for the Sergeant?
I do, real quick. Thank you, Sergeant Thomas, so much. We get so many emails about this from the community. I mean, we all know it. When I first got elected, I asked the chief, what was one of the biggest issues in the city? And he said, "e-bikes." And it's, there's no real legislation of any substance going through, you know, the state legislature. They're basically motorcycles, right? That are unregulated. And so when I asked the chief about this, the one thing I think is a really, has the most impact of what we can do now is, is through the schools. So I really love what Marina High School is doing. My alma mater, go Vikings. Can you kind of expand on that a little bit? And is there anything we can do as council members to really...
And is there anything we can do as council members to really get this program in the schools, like you said, into the grade schools and middle schools, et cetera? Like, what can we do to help you guys kind of permeate this through every school?
Sure. So just to give you a background on that, so that started with our school resource officers meeting with Marina High School. I've been involved in several discussions where the district has also been obviously aware of this pilot program and how it's developing. So though we can't enforce anything to make them take the course, I feel very optimistic that that the district will ultimately make this mandatory program for the schools in our city in the future. So obviously, we see the necessity of this. My wife and I, before I took this position, always talked about e-bikes, and we see them up and down the road, so it's everywhere. And there's no quick fix for it, but we feel that as we're now looking at data and making rational and reasonable decisions based upon the data, understanding that those school-aged kids, we are all on the same page and know that working together, we're going to be able to ultimately affect the situation for the better.
Perfect. And then like you said on those ordinances, please bring them forward if there's anything, you know, other tools you guys need to really help with this, because it is really dangerous, and everyone knows it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Counselor.
I just have a couple of questions. The program for the students to take this course, is it only for the students that are going to ride e-bikes or bikes to school, or is it going to be for all the students?
So of course, and I'll kind of backtrack a little bit here. So the bike safety course that we put on here at Council Chambers, though the majority of participants are individuals that receive a citation, anyone is welcome to attend. Of course, every school may be different, but my philosophy is that the more kids that know about this, whether they own a bike or may own a bike in the future, of course, everyone rides bikes, the more the merrier. So again, that decision will ultimately be up to the individual schools, but I know that our school resource officers and of course, the Huntington Beach Department as a whole wants to get the word out to the kids. So again, hopefully that answers your question, but I'm all about being proactive about this and spreading the word, educating the kids. As I mentioned, most of them just have no idea about the rules of the road. So we feel that once we teach them about that, once we have that dialogue, hopefully it just spreads around, and students will kind of have feedback and talk with each other about it.
Well, when we went out to Sacramento, we were at a conference, and that was actually one of the main issues from people from all over California. A lot of e-bikes are being modified. All the kids have to do is check out a YouTube video, change a chip out. When you guys find an e-bike that's been modified, is, do you guys take any extra, are there any extra charges, or does anything happen when you find one? Because I almost hit one child without a helmet on Sabrekin Hile. He was going so fast. There's no way that bike was supposed to go that fast. So what happens when you find an e-bike that's been modified to go faster?
Absolutely, yes. So it's not something that we see commonly because of the situation of just how manufacturers are producing. So for example, a Class 3 bicycle is essentially an electric motorcycle. If you're under the age of 16, you cannot operate one, and you need to have a helmet. So if we see those out on the roadway, technically, they're not street legal, so we have impounded them for two days according to the Vehicle Code, but we're just really kind of playing catch-up. And obviously, we have to remain within the statutes that are presented to us. So much of the statutes that we have statewide just are mere those of just standard bicycles. So the optimism is that that is ultimately going to happen, but I can't predict the future. I don't know when it's going to be. And that's why I mentioned as far as potentially local ordinances and working together and getting input and feedback, and just going over the data together, that hopefully we can maybe even get ahead of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I, as a parent, as a driver around, I mean, it's definitely concerning when I see especially a lot of the kids riding on their e-bikes, you know, often too fast, often not responding to stop signs and things like that, or even riding on the sidewalks, so many different pieces. I appreciate so much that you are, the school resource officers, working with Marina to do the classes at the school. And I also didn't know about the bicycle and pedestrian safety class. I understand now that it's really kind of more, I don't want to call it a penalty, but if you do something wrong, you're recommended to go to this class. Is that correct?
That's correct, and we feel that it's better by and large, particularly for under 18 age group, just to educate them, because that's really our emphasis is, of course, we're doing enforcement, they're still getting a citation, but instead of sending them over to West Court, which is our local court, we will send them there to the bike class. So instead of a fine, they're paying, they're essentially getting a two-hour education on bike safety and the rules of the road.
That is, I think that's awesome. Just as an aside, I just looked up the timing of that class, and it's, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, the second Saturday of every other month?
Yes, so the next one will be in July. We actually just had one this past weekend on Saturday, so it'll be two months from that in July.
At eight in the morning, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, great. I was thinking that in lieu of it only being something that people do for a penalty, and you did say everyone's invited to come, there might be an opportunity for us as a city to even do a marketing campaign, maybe offer some additional classes. I know that takes more resources, so I don't know what that would look like, but where we could do this more as a, like, an opportunity instead of a penalty, perhaps, where we really encourage people to do that. I know somebody, a friend of mine reached out the other day and texted me and asked if we had something like this, and I didn't know that we did. But she specifically was wanting to give her child an e-bike, but they're really hesitant because they don't really think that there's enough education. It sounds like this is more really just rules of the road biking. Is that correct?
Yes, there's an e-bike component to it, because many of the bicycles we do see are e-bikes.
Okay. I was just thinking, there might be value if there's resources, and maybe people even pay for this, right? Where we could do some type of an e-bike safety course where people, parents could maybe recommend that, you know, hey, kids, before you get to do this, you have to take this course, and I don't know if you want to call it become certified, but have something like that. That might, I know that there are parents that would probably want to do something like that. The other thing is, you know, in-person is always better, I think, as far as classes, but I was also wondering if the course could go online? Because again, as a parent, wanting, you know, my kids to have access to the information, I feel like if it could be on-demand, online, and again, if adults, parents, or whomever could recommend their children or others go there, that would be a way for us to get the word out as well. So I don't know if we have videos or anything like that that are done.
So you actually bring up a good point. So obviously, with personnel and being in person, putting on presentations, ultimately, we want to make this part of an administration function at the school. Obviously, an officer is going to be presenting the information and giving the perspective from law enforcement, and of course, the laws in California. So we actually are looking at making it a recording presentation, so that way we can dispense it to the schools, you know, more prevalently. And of course, it seems reasonable to me, I can't speak out of turn, but to me, it seems reasonable in this technological day of age where we can have a recording and have some sort of a way to get there and make it a voluntary resource for the community to be able to watch and see and of course, learn about bike safety.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the members?
Thank you, Sergeant, for all your hard work in your presentation. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Members, going back to the agenda, we're now on item 11, City Manager's Report, Food Allergy Awareness Week.
Mayor Strickland, members of the council, we have Division Chief Jeff Lopez from the Huntington Beach Fire Department, who will present to you Food Allergy Awareness Week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members and staff. I'm Jeff Lopez, your Operations Division Chief for your fire department, and I'm going to be introducing to you a PSA that was produced in cooperation with Huntington Beach Hospital by your fire department. There's an organization called FAIR, stands for Food, Allergy, Research, and Education, and they have celebrated this week as Food Allergy Awareness Week. So we partnered with our local hospital, who you'll see in this video, and I'm going to play you this about two-minute PSA here.
My name is Dane Morrissey. I'm a fire captain with the Huntington Beach Fire Department. I'm here today to talk to you about food allergies. May 14th through 20th is Food Allergy Awareness Week. Over 32 million Americans are living with potentially life-threatening food allergies, including nearly 6 million children. Every three minutes, someone is rushed to the ER because of an allergic reaction to something they ate.
What is a food allergy reaction? A food allergy is when your body's immune system reacts to a food protein because it's mistaken that protein as a threat. Symptoms can range from mild to life-threatening. Even trace amounts of a food allergen can cause a reaction in some people with food allergies. What is anaphylaxis? Anaphylaxis is a serious allergic reaction that comes on quickly and may cause death. Food allergies are the most common cause of anaphylaxis. Other triggers include insect stings, medications, and latex. So what are the most common food allergens? They are milk, eggs, peanuts, tree nuts, soy, wheat, fish, and shellfish.
What are some of the signs and symptoms of a food allergy reaction? These symptoms can appear minutes after exposure or potentially be delayed hours after being exposed to the food. These symptoms can include swelling of the lips, mouth, and throat, widespread redness and hives throughout the body, and difficulty swallowing. Anaphylaxis can lead to difficulty breathing, wheezing, or ultimately cardiac arrest. How do we treat anaphylaxis? Epinephrine is going to be our first-line treatment. Steps that you should take if encountering this situation, if the victim is prescribed an epinephrine auto-injector such as an EpiPen, you're going to help administer it immediately. Call 911, and the Huntington Beach Fire Department will be arriving on scene for continued treatment. We're going to treat with epinephrine, Benadryl, and breathing treatments such as Albuterol, and ultimately, take the patient to the hospital for continued care and treatment.
It is very important for you to understand how allergic reactions affect our entire community and what you can do to help those at risk. The Huntington Beach Fire Department has established an epinephrine training program in order to prepare our community to respond to allergic reactions, and you can follow the link found in this post to sign up for this free training. We encourage everyone to get educated and trained in how to respond to this important public health issue. Thank you.
So as you saw in that video, it was indicated that we have indeed begun a program to train members of the public who want to be certified to administer an Epi auto-injector. The opportunity to do that, you can use this link to sign up for the training. California, the EMS agency, has this certification, but they require particular training to accomplish that, and so we can offer that. Part of the training will include CPR and AED that you also need to have. So we've got about 13 people signed up so far, since that PSA went live yesterday on our social media, so we're real happy about that. And that's the end of our presentation, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions from the members?
Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff, to you and your colleagues for putting this together. This idea was inspired by our beautiful friend, Ally West, who many of you know passed away in February due to an allergic reaction. So many people, many of them kids, have food allergies, very serious food allergies. So I urge folks to learn what the signs are of an allergic reaction, because it doesn't look like what you think it would look like. And it's just really, really important. Both my kids have really severe food allergies, and so as a parent, it's a frightening thing to have to have to deal with. So thank you again for the work that you've done. I really appreciate it.
You're very welcome. It's our pleasure.
Anything else, members? Thank you so much. I really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, before we move on to item number 12, I would like to just make an announcement for those who are here for the special meeting at 8:00 PM. We're going to be delaying that special hearing until after our regularly scheduled meeting, so be patient. So, members, now we're going to item number 12. City Treasurer, please introduce your report.
That doesn't look right. Let's see. Just a sec. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the City Treasurer's Investment Report for the period March 31st, 2023. I'd like to start with the economic update. The Federal Reserve continued to raise the federal funds rate throughout the first quarter of 2023. At the most recent meeting in May, the FMOC raised the target rate for the federal funds another 25 basis points for a total of 500 basis points since it began raising. This brought the target range to 5% to 5.25%. Bringing down inflation to the Fed's 2% target has been slower than anticipated. Core goods and services inflation has remained higher than desired, as well, the tight labor market continues, as April reported a stronger-than-expected unemployment rate. We continue to see an inverted yield curve, which means longer-term rates are lower than short-term rates, and this inversion has signaled a recession in the past. This is a chart showing the interest rates for the last year for the two-year U.S. Treasury and the five-year U.S. Treasury. The reason that I am showing these is because these are a proxy for the level of rates the city is able to invest in when additional liquidity becomes available. As short-term interest rates rose in the first half of the quarter, they then began to drop in March after the banking issues emerged. The two-year U.S. Treasury peaked at 5.05% on March 8th, subsequently dropping to 3.76% in the following two weeks, and ultimately finishing the quarter at 4.06%. This rapid fall in rates during this time was likely attributable to investors choosing to allocate money into bonds, as there was a flight to safety after the news of the bank failures emerged. The investment portfolio summary as of March 31, the market value of the city's investment portfolio was approximately $326.9 million, with a book value of approximately $340.1 million. As you may know, bond interest rates and prices move inversely, so as the interest rates have been going up, the prices of the bonds purchased at the previously lower rates goes down. So this concept explains why the current market value of the portfolio is lower than the book value. The portfolio is invested in the following security types and percentages as of March 31st. Federal agencies, which consists of bonds of Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, Federal Farm Credit Bank, and Federal Home Loan Bank at 49%, U.S. Treasuries at approximately 24%, corporate bonds A rated and above at 12%, super nationals approximately 9%, and 5% in camp, with approximately 1% in short-term commercial paper. All of these securities are allowable per the California State Code and the city's investment policy, and if you'd like to find out more information about each investment type and the allowable percentages, you can take a look at the city's investment policy, which is on the website under City Treasurer Investments. As the Federal Reserve continued to raise rates in the first quarter of the year, available funds were invested into higher-yielding options. For the quarter ended March 31st, four U.S. agencies were purchased totaling $20 million, and one $5 million corporate bond, Pfizer, was purchased. Since we have received our property taxes in April and in this month, we have invested an additional approximately $26 million in investments, with yields from 3.7% to 4.92%. The investment portfolio earnings here, you can see for the month of March 2023, were $574,000, an increase of approximately 77% from the same month in the prior year. Fiscal year-to-date earnings of $3.8 million were up approximately 56% from the previous fiscal year. These higher earnings were due both to the increase in interest rates as well as the higher average balance of the portfolio. The effective rate of return for March was 1.99%, with fiscal year-to-date return of 1.62%. The benchmark has increased rapidly with a sharp rise in interest rates, and this benchmark was at March 31st was 3.63%, which is the 12-month moving average of the interpolated 1.5-year U.S. U.S. Treasury. So right now, as I mentioned, short-term rates are very high, with rates actually lower going out further. So our benchmark increased rapidly, which is a shorter-term rate, and our portfolio will lag that as we have to have some time for the securities to come due and reinvest. But as I mentioned, we had received the property taxes, and we have invested in the last month or so with rates from 3.7% to 4.92%, as well as we have approximately $25 million in our camp account, which is our overnight account, and that current-day yield is 5.18%. So we will start seeing the effects of the higher rates on the portfolio. This is just a chart of some of the selected investment policy compliance requirements, and the policy remains in compliance with all relevant state codes and the city's investment policy with no exceptions. So to summarize, the City Treasurer's objectives are to ensure safety of principal, there have been no losses, to provide for sufficient liquidity to meet the needs of the city and its operations, which we have done, and thirdly, provide for market rate of return through economic and budgetary cycles. Additionally, the portfolio has been a positive contributor to the city with earnings of approximately $3.88 million fiscal year-to-date as of March 31. This concludes my report, and I am open for any questions.
Members, any questions? Do we want to move to receive and file the City Treasurer's report?
I'll make the motion.
If it moved and seconded, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKean.
Yes.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. Members, now we're moving on on the agenda. We're at the consent calendar, items 13 through 20. Would any member like to pull an item off the consent calendar? Seeing and hearing none, clerk, please call the roll on the consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Make a motion.
Somebody has to move in second.
Sorry. Moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Burns.
All right. Ready to vote? Councilmember Kelmick.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKean.
Yes.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Consent calendars move 7-0.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, members, we're at file item number 20. Approved sole source purchasing of shot over. Staff, please introduce your report. Oh, I'm sorry, that was, I'm not, sorry, sorry. Item number 21. Approved introductions, ordinance number 4282, amending Huntington Beach Municipal Code 9.20 relating to public nudity.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, we are here to introduce ordinance number 4282, amending Municipal Code Chapter 9.20. So the proposed ordinance before you today, on October 12, 2022, the city's Attorney's Office provided a legal opinion recommending Municipal Code 9.20.015, public nudity be amended to more clearly define exposure in public and provide additional clarity by adding city-owned or operated facilities to the existing municipal code. So the majority of the ordinance was already in existence, and this review ultimately tightens up the language to leave less room for any misinterpretation or gray area. And so with that, we are recommending the approval for introduction, ordinance number 4282, an ordinance of the City of Huntington Beach, amending Title 9.20 of Huntington Beach Municipal Code relating to public nudity.
I'll move.
Second.
Councilman Burns, move. Councilmember McKean, seconds.
Any discussion?
Oh, no, okay. Thank you. I'm likely going to be abstaining from this item. I asked staff for kind of the impetus for the change in code, and I had to look up some of the terms that we used, and what this, I think ordinance was missing was the "why." This small tweak was needed. Normally, it would be like, hey, the National Association of Parks and Rec folks have decided that this is the best practice, and I didn't really see that in here. We added the word natal clef, which is fun. Every time we do public nudity or adult ordinances, it's always the legalese of trying to figure out what things are. I honestly don't want to live in a city where it's illegal to moon someone, so I'm probably going to be abstaining from this. Thank you.
I'm glad I'm not the only person who had to look up or Google natal clef.
Yeah, I did too.
Okay, it has, go ahead, Counselor.
Sure. I just wanted to ask the question that was asked earlier during public comments about the inclusion of natal clef. Now, we've all said it. If that prohibits someone from being naked in the showers, wearing a thong at the beach, some of the things that were mentioned earlier, is that the case?
Michael.
I deterred the city attorney for that.
I apologize. What was the question again?
I have to repeat that.
I apologize. I apologize.
One of the public commenters earlier had mentioned that the addition of natal clef did not happen before because of the concern about the ability for people to wear thongs on the beach, to be naked in the showers, et cetera, and I wanted to better understand if that would be a challenge.
So the additional language only clarifies certain situations that Community Services was dealing with out in the field, and so we were helpful from my office to try to help provide that clarity. The substance, the issues that were brought up by the public speaker, they're not spoken to by the amendments. So whatever the concerns may be by the public speaker, I don't think it has anything to do with the proposed amendments, if that answers your question.
Thanks.
I'll have a clarification. I just want to make sure, so are thongs legal or not legal? I'm just being like, I mean, people, the public needs to know.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry, but like, it's an important question.
Tony doesn't want to violate the law.
There are a dozen responses that come to mind, but the one I'm going to give you is it depends on how much exposure, and so it's going to be a judgment call based on enforcement out in the field.
Okay, I do have a question that actually prompted by what you said. So I didn't expect to see this item on the agenda. We didn't discuss it, at least nobody discussed it with me before it came up, so I wasn't aware that it was an issue, and so I do want to make a suggestion because, so you're saying that there was an issue that staff was encountering out in the field, so what was that issue? So I have questions. Long story short, I would rather have some time to study this and talk to staff about it. Do we have to vote on this tonight? So I guess I would make a motion to continue this.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Ashley, I mean, did you want to answer that question, or do you know, or do you want us to table it?
Happy to answer. So this actually stemmed from a review of all of our administrative regulations that we have within the city. When I was a member of the deputy leadership team, that was one of my roles, and so because our department administers the public nudity administrative regulation, there was an ordinance attached to that, and so to make sure that that administrative regulation was still pertinent and had all the correct language, we put the entire AR plus the ordinance through to the city Attorney's Office for review. So there hasn't been any problems or anything for us to stem for this. It was just simply part of a work product that we had been working on as a team.
And I will add for context, because some of the public speakers sort of suggested that this was done capriciously and that somehow the city at some point many, many years earlier has just started to take a heavy hand with nudist activity. That is categorically not the case. I've been here in office since 2014. We've been dealing with some of these issues, and in 2014, it was brought to my attention that there were some serious, serious issues between some of those who wanted to have these nudist events and then the staff, the city staff, that was required to staff these events. So to say, well, they were just, they're just private, they're harmless, I can't get into detail, but in order to protect our employees, I can tell you that's categorically not true, and that's when this came into effect, and now the amendment's here to just tighten up some of the language. So there is a history that I can't get into tonight, but this is absolutely justified, especially if nothing else, to protect our employees.
I respect that, but I also think it's important and imperative to not leave that gray area, that we're very clear of what, that's why I asked that question. I mean, I know a lot of people laugh, but if someone's going on the beach, they got to know whether they're violating or not, and so maybe we can get a little bit more clarification. I very much respect that we need to protect our city employees, but I think leaving a gray area is not a positive.
And if we could speak to, so that speaker said something about having employees sign waivers, and I actually don't know if that addresses the problem or not, so if we could speak to that too, just to, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's, I'd appreciate it.
Well, there's been a motion to table in a second. Do we want to call the roll on that, to table the item?
Objections, ready to vote? All right, Councilmember Kelmick.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKean.
Yes.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
The item's tabled.
Okay, thank you. Members, we're moving on to number 22, item number 22, introduced by Councilman Burns. Councilman Burns, would you like to introduce your item?
This is just calling for a review on the worthiness and the missions of all our boards, committees, and commissions. I think we're up to like 32, and there's a couple ad hoc ones that don't even have appointments. I think it's just time that we review them, talk about with staff their future, and really just form the ad hoc committee to discuss it.
I would like to speak on this item. I introduced a similar piece of legislation when I was in Sacramento called the Bureaucracy Realignament and Closure Commission, and I think it's very important to take a look at these boards and commissions and update them and see if there's overlap or ways that we can, you know, downsize. So I'm very much in support of this item.
Just a quick comment. In my view, the purpose of boards and commissions is to encourage civic engagement by the residents in the municipal affairs of their local elected government, and I feel many of these boards and commissions are focused on private sector issues and should be dealt with in the private sector, and they require valuable time from staff, which should be better focused on the boards and commissions that relate to the core functions of the city government, so I will support this as well, Pat.
So, Councilmember Burns, are you recommending that we do the action on 1, 2, and 3?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that. I'll second that motion.
Oh, Councilman. Actually, I'll be supporting this item as well. I actually brought the item forward last year to keep reviewing. We're not up to 32, we're down to 32. So, yeah, I think reviewing this after the first pass-through, I think there were some things that we couldn't get to an agreement on, so I think there's a, staff has done an enormous amount of work on analyzing, understanding the background to all of these, and so I'll be supportive of it, and I also volunteer to serve on it to kind of bring what we did the last year into that meeting.
All right, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, would you like to call the roll?
Sure. Are you making selections tonight for the committee, or will that happen?
That's up to the mayor's discretion. It's his choice.
I think he moved, we moved item 1, 2, and 3, and I don't see, other than the 90 days to report, I'll just make a commitment to get this done ASAP, to get the board.
Is that fine with everybody? All right.
No, I just said, I just said I would, it doesn't say in here who's on the ad hoc committee, so I just.
Oh, I just thought you might want to select councilmembers tonight. It's fine if you're not ready.
I'm not ready to do that tonight.
Okay, very good. All right, Councilmember Kelmick.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKean.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Item approved, 7-0.
Okay. Members, we're now on file item number 23, submitted by Councilman McKean. Councilman McKean, would you like to introduce your item?
Definitely. So this H item has to do with the previous city council's vote on July 20 of 2021 to enter into a joint power authority to enable acquisition and conversion of two market-rate apartment complexes into workforce housing as part of what they called the Middle Income Housing Program, and those properties are the Elon Building at Beech Elles and the Breakwater Community behind Olive Garden on Beach Boulevard. As touched on earlier, we are heading into turbulent financial times in the economy as we also face budget constraints that we have to deal with in order to protect our public safety, infrastructure, and services, so every opportunity for revenue is precious. As part of this acquisition, the previous city council willingly agreed that the city will not receive property tax on these two properties, which totals $500,000 per year for upwards of 30 years. That's a total of $15 million in lost property tax revenue. As it's almost been two years, I think it's due time that the residents receive an updated comprehensive report from the project-sponsored catalyst on how these projects are going. Some of the items this comprehensive report should include but not be limited to are: 1, how many of the 649 units are occupied? How many have been remodeled as planned and at what cost? How many of the units are leased to persons earning 80% to 20% of the area meeting income as required? What are the average monthly rents? To fund the Middle Income Housing Program, the city has to forego future property tax revenue for up to a 30-year period. How much in property tax does the city forego in '22, and what is the estimated amount for '23 and over the next remaining years? What are the property management fees paid every year, and to whom are they paid? What are the annual maintenance and repair fees? How many of the retail shops on the first level of Elon are leased or are in negotiations to lease? It appears to me they're all vacant. I feel it's time we lift up the hood and take this engine apart piece by piece so that we can see what the taxpayers have been getting for their investment. Thank you.
If there's any way, I'd like to know how many of them are working in Huntington Beach as opposed to working someplace else, but just living here.
That's a good point. It's for workforce housing, so I, yeah, that's definitely a part of the report. I totally agree.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, I'd like, yeah, I'd like to add that to the audit or whatever you call it.
Comprehensive report, yep.
Yeah. I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Councilman Kelmick.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate us wanting to dig into a project that we did two years ago. Do you want to first take issue with kind of the tone of this item that kind of implies that there's some sort of nefarious act that was taken? CMFA is one of the largest bond issuers in the state of California. These bonds are not on our books at all, and I know that that, there was a narrative during the campaign that this debt was taken on by the city, this debt was not taken on by the city. We authored, we joined a JPA, just like we are with the Sanitation District and OCTA and the West Orange County Water Board, and a lot of the questions you have on property taxes were in the staff report that you referenced, right? Like, it's not upwards of $500,000 a year, it's $370,000 a year.
It says $500,000 in that staff report from July 20.
Staff, I'm looking at it.
Sure. So again, I just want to, how much have we lost? I'd like to know.
Well, it's not lost. It's foregone for at least 15 years, and in 15 years, we can force a sale, so it's about $6 million over 15 years, $6.4 million over 15 years that we forego, and then we can force a sale, and then we get the revenue from the building. So at the end of the staff report, it really talks about the investment in this project and that unless you're betting against the real estate market in Huntington Beach, which by not building into housing, we're obviously increasing the value there, and so the equity in this is in 30 years, we own nearly half a billion dollars in property for free effectively. Like, we've, there's property tax that we foregone, which is roughly, I think it's 18 million? No, no, it's less than that. It's 12 million over the course of 30 years, but the annual rate of return in our LEAF account versus the annual rate of return on invest, on property in California is obviously much greater. So again, like, I want to see exactly, I want to see how many units are occupied, how the, you know, let's have catalysts and CMFA, but I do want to be careful that some of these are catalysts of private entity, that we want to make sure that we're not defaming or just, you know.
No, not at all.
Or stating that these folks may be doing something nefarious when we do do these items, because I do, I understand that you consider these to be ideas or something like that, but I do want to reference that in the state lawsuit, Councilmember Burns's H item was Exhibit A. So we want to be careful, I think, when we bring these items forward in the future. I would recommend that we be careful about how, if we are potentially casting aspersions. But again, like, I'll be supporting this because I want to see, obviously, how this is going, but again, like, this is, when I voted for this the first time, it's, we actually opted to use. actually opted opted to use CMFA instead of one of the other bond issuers because their fees were much lower upfront. So, yeah, I look forward to the report, and I believe I saw somebody from CMFA here if anybody had any direct questions tonight, and I appreciate them coming down for this as well. But, I mean, if you go back, I recommend folks that have questions on this to read the staff report, it's it's very succinct and very clear as to what's going on, but as I said, like, let's find out, you know, how are things going? But I don't think we're actually going to know where the people work. I don't think we're allowed to know that. This is still private, it's still private housing, effectively.
It was built as workforce housing.
Was it?
Yeah.
Was it built as just middle income housing? Like, they're two different things.
I don't think it was, but.
Yeah.
We can go back and look at the minutes. I mean, there's been a lot of residents that talk about not being able to to work and live in the city where they work, and this was built as workforce housing.
It's built as middle income housing.
Okay.
Like, it's moderate, it's tagged as moderate affordable housing, so a family of four making $143,000 a year qualifies to live here. I actually, one of the interesting metrics that I would potentially see out of this would be how many folks didn't have to move because they already qualified to live there.
Sure. Yeah, I want all the details, and we'll pull up the minutes from the, you know, the July twentieth, twenty twenty one meeting, and, like I said, I really look forward to this report. So, motion in a second.
It's been moved, it's been seconded, and clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKean.
Yes.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Item passes seven zero as amended.
Thank you. Members, we're now on file item number twenty-four, submitted by Councilwoman Mosher. Councilwoman, would you like to introduce your item?
I would, thank you. So tonight I heard the phrase, "Don't change things that were working," and I agree and wish that the decades-long tradition of the Greater Huntington Beach Interfaith Council organizing the invocations was still in place. However, as of February twenty-first, it is not. That being said, I'm surprised that an invocation policy hasn't been brought back to council as was requested months ago by the mayor and mayor pro tem. They directed the city manager and city attorney to come back with a policy to quote, "create a list of religious leaders, to evaluate those leaders, and create a rotating system for them to offer prayers at city council meetings." Since that time, I have heard nothing. The council and the community have a right to be updated. In an effort to bring some transparency and to have a public discussion or update, I chose to bring this item forward. The action or perceived lack of action should not be swept under the rug. I want it to be clear that I deeply value the rich faith-based traditions and voices in our city, and I thank many of the commenters tonight for making such a strong argument for interfaith prayer. I have found great value in hearing from the tapestry of voices from various faiths during our past invocations. We can glean so much from those voices, and we have, and I would say if any council needs to hear these types of voices of wisdom, I think it is our council. I've researched invocation policies in other cities, and I know that it's possible to do this right. However, all that I've seen so far is no policy and only one faith group represented. My preference would be to maintain this important tradition that has been a part of our city's meetings on and off for many decades, a tradition that has shown our religious diversity and inclusivity. I have lived almost my entire life in Huntington Beach. I went to St. Bonaventure School for eight years. There, we started every day with a prayer, and I do see its value. I have heard from some via email and online that I must be morally bankrupt for bringing this forward, that I am trying to remove prayer and limit religious expression. The reality is, I am trying to make sure that we create a constitutionally sound policy that is inclusive of the entire community, including those who are religious, those who are not religious, and importantly, not just one particular religion or denomination. If we can't do that, then we do have the option for a moment of silence or a moment of reflection. It is not my preference, but it might be where we are if we are not able to find a policy that is inclusive of everyone. I'd like to ask with that, city attorney, city manager, do you have an update on the policy request that was given back in February?
Thank you, Councilman, Councilmember Mosher. We do not have a cohesive update, but we'll be glad to bring it back at the next council meeting.
Okay, city attorney, same response?
Yeah, we began the research, but there's a lot to do in the office and in my office, and there wasn't a date due back with this one, so it's been pushed.
Okay.
And if I also may, it's it's a learning lesson that we should at least communicate back to the council and the public the status of the H items, whether we're progressing on them or not.
Okay, thank you. Well, then I would move that we bring back a constitutionally sound policy by a date certain, perhaps in June, maybe by the second meeting in June. It's been since February, so it has been a while. If if that's not reasonable, then I'd certainly be open to hearing what a more reasonable timeframe would be, so that we can vote on this and that we, as a community, can move forward from this chapter.
And I would like to make a substitute motion by action to continue the practice of the mayor choosing the person who gives the invocation, and I would also withdraw the H item request to prepare a policy.
I second that.
And to further move forward, there was no policy that ever gave the interfaith council the ability to give these prayers, and my experience is, Speaker of the Assembly picks who picks the person giving the invocation, Senate pro tem, many other organizations. And so I, again, the reason for me is to move that the mayor will choose the individual to move forward and give the invocation in the future.
I believe that currently, it's not that the mayor chooses the individual, but.
No, it's not current, that's my motion. That's my motion. My motion is by action to continue the practice of the mayor choosing the person to give the invocation and withdraw the H item on request for a policy preparation.
Okay, with whoever makes the choice, though, it has to be, it cannot be someone from the same religious tradition all the time, because then I think that puts us in jeopardy of legal.
I would defer to the city attorney. I've worked with the city attorney's office on this exact language, and I would just say, experience, I had Speaker Daryl Steinberg, who had someone of the Jewish faith do the whole year. And again, I will work to make sure we get different faiths here, but I would defer to the city attorney, because I've worked on this language with the city attorney's office.
Yeah, and I know Mr. Vigliotta spent a good amount of time, and I apologize, I've been in trial prep and in deposition, so some of my work has has been taken on by Mr. Vigliotta. They've had conversations, if you have any comments to add.
I do, I think the mayor's motion is fine, and as long as there's no, as long as he's not, or whoever the whoever the mayor is, is not telling the person giving the invocation what they must say, I think we're fine.
Correct. Again, when I said the office, it was Mr. Vigliotta.
That's understood. Understood.
So what, do I understand that this would be moving forward, not just for your mayorship, but ongoing?
Correct, ongoing.
Okay, and I have a clarifying question, and I thought you said that there was no policy developed, but it sounds like something has been researched and that there would be something available for people to look at so that they understand what the city's policy is and what criteria are going to be used to make the selection.
The city has never, this city hasn't had a policy on this for a long time, and again, people talk about the practice of the interfaith council, that there was no policy, I did the research, there was no policy by any city council that gave the interfaith council the ability to go do the prayers. And so therefore, I'm, again, moving forward, I made my motion that I believe it should be the mayor that'll make that decision.
I believe this leaves us open to a constitutional dilemma as far as exposure for the city of having potentially an establishment issue with religion. I'm obviously not an attorney, so I'm not going to say that.
Well, again, this is, okay.
I'm not done, thank you. I am curious, though, also, what has changed since your original ask from February, where you asked for all of these things in a policy?
Well, I I've realized after the research that there was no policy given, and I do believe that, again, from experience, the Speaker of the Assembly picks, the Speaker pro tem picks, in fact, in the House of Representatives, I believe the Speaker of the House picks, and so I don't think we're exposing ourselves, because there's many different government organizations that have this exact same kind of policy.
Well, you know, it was brought up earlier, the Greece versus Galloway case, and I think that that's something that we need to consider as well, that there needs to be a rotation, there needs to be an opening and a available access to be able to give the invocation. You know, if you'd like to proceed with you selecting these, I mean, I guess, so be it, I just don't think that it's appropriate, and also, I don't, I don't know, and perhaps you'll prove me wrong, but that, you know, it would acknowledge the very, again, as I said, the rich diversity of people of faith and not of faith in the community. You said that we didn't have a policy for the interfaith council being here, but so many of the commenters commented about the fact that for for many, many years, we've had a tradition of having a diverse selection of people of faith giving the invocations, and whether or not there was an actual policy, I thought that was your intention to correct that at that other meeting. But it seems unfortunate that people might not be able to actually participate in this way, and I think that's really the thing, to be able to participate in civic government by providing an invocation and doing it in a constitutional way. And I believe that your proposal isn't going to do that, and I'm also concerned that it's not going to allow or to show the full richness of our community, and that includes, again, people of faith and not faith, because what I've seen since the February twenty-first decision was having our chaplains come, and I appreciate the words that they've said. However, they are all Christian, and you chose them to be here. So that makes me concerned that it's going to continue to be that, and I hope that it's not, and I hope that you prove me wrong.
Well, and just again, for the record, I checked with Mike Vigliotta from the city attorney's office, and they gave me the green light on this motion specifically. So clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick.
Abstain.
Mosher.
No.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKean.
Yes.
Bolton.
No.
Burns.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Okay.
Three, one, two.
Motion passes, members. Now, we're going to go into adjournment of the regular meeting, and please give the city clerk about five minutes to go into our special meeting, because the city clerk requested that it would probably need a five-minute break, is that correct?
Yes, when we adjourn this meeting, we have to shut down the system, it does a processing for a moment, and then we restart the next meeting, so if we can have five minutes, that would be great.
We're on a five-minute recess.